Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you tonight to the City of Oxford Regular Board Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 12th, 2023, and it is 7:01 PM. We are assembled in the third-floor Commissioners' Boardroom of City Hall. And before we get going, I would like to read the vision for the City of Oxford, which is that we will partner with the community to build upon the charm and character of our historic, vibrant, and walkable city to create an extraordinary quality of life for all. And I would like anybody with electronic devices to please mute them or turn them off at this time. And then I would like to invite Reverend Bruce Beck of West Oxford Baptist Church to come forward to the podium, and for all those who are interested in joining us to open this meeting.
That's right. While we come to you tonight to just thank you for your many blessings on this city, think about what we have, think about your blessings upon us and the city, and I'll just thank you for the opportunity to gather on Saturday just to enjoy your people, enjoy creativity, enjoy just your support in making an event happen. We thank you for that. And we also thank you for the rain that was so bad. We look at across the world and realize just how blessed we are. I know we have been out of shape, infrastructure and things going on, but in reality, we are truly blessed people. We get what other countries have to face situations. And we just thank you for what you've given us, just pray that in the days ahead that we can be good stewards of what you've given us. We thank you for the leadership that you have in place. We always pray for our leadership. We pray that as both leaders and also servants in the community, that we would all always be about what is best. We praise you the way that you bring us together to the table to do that very thing. Jesus, we pray.
Thank you, Reverend. And at this time, Commissioner Ron Bullock will introduce some questions.
Please stand and prepare. Salute the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll consider adjustments to and approval of the agenda. You have the agenda before you on line and treated. Your work is electronic, and I believe since the last meeting, we did add a closed session to the end of the meeting. With that exception, there have been no other changes. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Conne, discussion. All in favor of approving the agenda as written with the addition of the closed session at the end, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. That motion carries. In order to provide for the highest standards of behavior and transparency in governance, our board has approved the Code of Ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct. Among those, we should avoid in perpetuating the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such in respect to any matters before the board tonight. And if any of you do know of a conflict of interest or appearance of such, please state so at this time. Let the record note, no conflicts mentioned. We move forward to the delegations portion of our meeting, at which time we have a presentation of the yard of the month, and I would like to ask if Charlie and Mary Green of 104 Green Tree Circle are here to the audience. Okay. Well, then I'm going to tell you about their yard. Because they have a beautiful yard, Green Tree Circle is located in Rollingwood, which is a small development on the other side of 85, towards the Antioch Road. And I suspect this is not the first time they've won. They have an absolutely beautiful yard. So their address, if you want to go pink, is 104 Green Tree Circle. They have a profusion of flowers blooming around the base of their mailbox. Their mailbox stand even has a planter in it, and that is filled with flowers, so it really is a beautiful entranceway. They have a whole landscaped area to the left of their driveway, in between their driveway and the neighbor's yard, and potted plants and so on. Beautifully done shrubs in front of the house, and this gorgeous yellow door with a matching butterfly bench in the front, and then a beautiful wreath to top it all off. So even though they are not here, I'm going to ask you in absentia, we give them a round of applause. They just really set off the neighborhood nicely, and their certificate reads Yard of the Month awarded to Charlie and Mary Green of 104 Green Tree Circle in recognition of their valuable contribution towards the beauty of our community, presented this the 12th day of September, 2023. And we do have a little something to give them, and they will be entered into a drawing for some prizes at the end of the season. And this month, normally at this time, we acknowledge the Morgan Adams Rent Employee of the Month, but we do not have one because I think we got a little overwhelmed with all the preparation for hot sauce contests, and normally employees that are nominated are interviewed and so on, and we got a little behind that. So that doesn't mean we don't have wonderful employees. We absolutely do, and we're so proud of them. But we'll come back in October, and we'll be ready with our awarding for the month of October. And with that, I'm going to take a moment. I know this is going to come up at the end of the meeting, but we had an amazing hot sauce contest and festival despite the weather. And Alyssa Blair, who was the chief coordinator, asked for a moment if she could make a comment, and so I would like to give that now.
Thank you, Mayor Sodan. I just wanted to briefly say, reach everybody's attention, with the hot sauce festival, that is a humongous event that takes an entire team to plan and coordinate and make sure it goes off without a hitch for the public. So I wanted to take a moment to thank all of my colleagues here from the Police Department, Fire Department, Parks and Recreation, Public Works, Finance, Planning, Human Resources, everybody, engineering, everybody takes a hand in hot sauce. Cindy does, City Manager does, Sabrina does here. So I appreciate all of them, and I hope when you see them out and about, you tell them thank you for their efforts for making that event happen. A lot of them are out there, come through morning until after everybody else is already gone, so thank you.
A rousing round of applause. We couldn't control the weather, but everything that the staff that worked on this could control, they did. And I think it's clear that the planning was outstanding, and we appreciate everybody's work, and we appreciated all the vendors that came, and all the public that showed up despite the foreboding weather. It was a really big deal to us to have people turn out when they, everybody could have made the decision to stay home, but they couldn't. And I would also like to give a shout out for our new manager, Brent Taylor, who was out there at 5:00 in the morning with everybody else. So that was really something, we appreciate that. Thank you, Alyssa. And at this time, we move on to our public comment portion of the agenda, during which citizens may speak on agenda as well as non-agenda items. And we have, in order to do so, they must sign up in advance, and we have two signed up today. And so I would like to invite Blair Duke, Charlie Wall. So it's two different people?
Yes.
Okay, but you're going to speak during the same
Yes.
time period? Okay. Carry on, and when you get to the podium, please state your names and addresses for the record and the purpose of your discussion. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Charlie Wall. I'm a contractor here in North Carolina. My address is 720 Silver Hill Road, I'm in Lexington, North Carolina, but I have property on this, so I'll carry it from there here in Oxford.
I'm Blair Duke, at 5590 Town Street Road in Oxford.
Basically, what we're looking at is, we have a petition for basically trying to get annexed into the city limits from the county. Right now, we're sitting right on the edge of Tabs Creek and basically 158 and 85 altogether there. Most of the properties around where we're located are commercial interstate. What we're basically looking into doing is maybe starting a small butcher shop with fresh seafood, fresh meats, local farmers in the area. I have a lot of concern and thought about, you know, the steroids and the different things done to meats that you buy in the supermarkets, which is trying to bring something to Oxford that'll be a staple for basically everyone, to have a good avenue for fresh meats and fresh seafood.
I understand that you need to connect with the water and sewer to do this.
Yes, that's the main, that's the main thing we're wanting.
Do you put your application in?
Yes, we have a petition signed, and it's been turned in to Cheryl. We've also got some building designs and sort of our ideas of what we have at that, so we're just sort of waiting to push forward a little bit to sort of find out, you know, some cost variables, sort of, you know, if we can't get annexed in and change the zone and, you know, whether we're able to basically hook up to the city sewer and water.
You have a bribe for an application?
Yes.
That would be nice, something is that Ms. Hart Hill, with the proper time, you'll be bringing that forward?
After proper time, I just received an authorization. I think this is, so it's not too complicated process, so yes, I got an authorization.
Okay.
From personal experience, I've actually bought, my wife has actually bought fresh fish and stuff from, and it's, it's great. It'd be nice to have when you bought fresh fish, ungrown beef.
Excellent. So I think, you know, we appreciate your coming here tonight, but Ms. Hart will kind of walk you through the process and let you know when it will actually formally come. I suspect the cleaning board is before this board, so there's a little bit of a process, and so we'll probably see that.
Perfect. Thank you so much for having us.
I do have one question for you. I've seen your signs on the side of Tabs Creek. I go by that way most morning to come back later. So what are your self-pleasure? When do you guys open, when you sell? Because I'm kind of tired of driving to this city.
We got, right now, we got shrimp, scallops, tuna, swordfish, salmon, basically any kind of fish you want to get. I'm going to take a trip at least once and not twice a week. And the wine cheese. I've been commercial fishing for the last five years. I got my own boat, so I've got a lot of connections down there. Everything's coming fresh, right off the boat, economy.
If I stop by at 8:00 in the morning, you're not going to run me off, are you? I can stop by later today.
Wednesday, Thursday, right now, we live over like Wednesday, Thursday, 12 to 6, and then Friday, Saturday, 9 to 6. Just kind of killing the work, waters out.
We look forward to your application, making this way through. Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next, I would like to invite Stuart Powell to come forward to the podium, and please be so kind and state your address and your purpose for speaking. Start. Thank you.
Stuart Powell, 301 West Morndale Drive. I wanted to talk about Boys and Girls Club first. I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Blair, who's worked months and months on the hot sauce festival, and also everyone else who showed up at 5:00 AM or throughout there. So I have the opportunity to attend the ribbon putting at the Boys and Girls Club, and I wanted to reiterate something that Commissioner Fields brought up in a previous meeting. The Boys and Girls Club has a big impact on this community. They've done a lot of renovations, and they are fundraising. Vance and Grahamble County have given contributions to the Boys and Girls Club. I believe City of Oxford still runs a nod, so I would like to bring up Commissioner Field's request and consider getting to that because that's investing in our children tomorrow. Today, Angela.
Very much, Mr. Powell.
I was there as well, and it was a great day, and they've done a lot of good.
Absolutely have. Yeah, it looks beautiful. Thank you. And now we will move forward to the public hearing portion of our agenda, at which time residents and citizens may only speak on public hearing items. And item 4.1 is to hold a public hearing for the second required public hearing to hear citizen input regarding the 2023 Community Development Block Grant. This is a block grant to apply for a neighborhood revitalization of 950,000. And in order to apply for these funds, we must hold two public hearings. The first was a generic hearing to announce that the community development block grant funds are available and to allow persons or groups to participate in grant application planning. So at this time, that, the generic one was held last month. This is the second public hearing. I now declare the hearing open. Is there anybody in this section to your line right that would like to come forward to speak on this issue? Is there anyone in this center section that would like to come forward to speak on this issue? Is there anyone in this section to your left that would like to speak on this issue?
Just want to give you a quick overview of what we're trying to achieve. The city is preparing to move to a block grant application for housing improvements. The application is due on November 14, and the funding category is called neighborhood revitalization. The city is eligible to apply for up to $950,000. The proposed project would include the rehabilitation of up to six homes scattered throughout the city. Through the program, homes have to comply with the north of rehabilitation and image standards and be tested and evaluated for then as pain and made accessible for people with disabilities and comply with any local and federal historic standards that is applicable. The city has maintained a list of the homeowners that are expressed in need of home repair, assistance, or the needs of the property owners, the senior that are asking for it and that would be interested in participating, and the response has been good. The grant will pay for comprehensive repairs to the homes as needed, and the property owners must agree to a loan being placed on their property for eight years, after which the loan is forgiven. If there are leftover funds for housing rehabilitation, the city can select other incompleable homeowners for assistance. There are no local matching funds required for this grant, and the proposed budget will be $950,000, and that means four of the grant. The expenses will be $675,000 for single and rehabilitation, $98,500 for program administration, and $3,500 for planning, for the total of $950,000. So the requested action is to approve the budget and fund these funds, which the auditions do on November 14.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Commissioner, it looks like Commissioners Bridges and Toby need to have a question.
How many applicants did you get, Cheryl?
Well, I have a waiting list. I have a whole list of people.
Have you any idea how much per household do we need to be spent?
We've selected seven. They tell us not to select more than that, but we have the only list.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah. You know, I was listening, and in my brain, I'm trying to figure out how we could be talking about grant and then leans on folks' houses.
For giving.
Huh?
For giving, yes.
Why, why is there a leaning in the first place?
So there is a leaning, so when we fix someone's house, they don't sell it and make a profit. So we have to do a leaning, because it almost arrives for eight years. So after eight years, it goes away.
Okay, understood.
Any questions? Thank you very much for those questions and for your response. Ms. Hart, any questions? Ms. Senate? Can I ask you to do the math for me again? I heard $675,000 for a single-family home renovation, $98,000 for program administration, but then I thought I heard you say $3,000 for planning, and that?
Yeah, and then it's some more expenses too, that is the major part of the budget. So lead abatement and those type of things come down.
So there's another over $100,000 for lead abatement and another?
Right. So the total is $950,000.
Okay.
So we are allowed to apply. We have one grant that we could maybe start up, and then we have this, and we're hoping to work in both.
Oh, excellent. Excellent.
And we have additional steps.
Just taking advantage of your night. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Ms. Hart? Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Hart. Is there anyone from any section in this room that would like to come forward and speak further on this topic? Okay. I declare the public hearing closed, and we move forward to the agenda items to consider this. So that's item 5.1. Again, I reiterate, consider allowing staff to apply for the Neighborhood Revitalization Program Grant for $950,000 in order to apply for these funds. We have held two public hearings. Last month was a generic hearing to announce that the funds were available, and this month was to hear further comment. We heard from Ms. Hart, as the only person to comment, the maximum amount available for the Neighborhood Revitalization Program is $950,000. No matching funds are required, and as both public hearings have now been held, staff recommend applying for the Neighborhood Revitalization Program Grant. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Okay, that was unanimously motion, I believe. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Hart, for your comments. Item 5.2, consider calling for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the rezoning of 1203 N. North Ocean Street from neighborhood business to highway business. To call for a public hearing to hear the rezoning of 1203 North Ocean Street from neighborhood to highway business, and staff recommends calling for a public hearing by the October 10th board meeting. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
As I understand, I'm in favor of calling for a public hearing, but as I understand, there's a little bit of discussion and maybe some uncertainty, and the laws involved and some of the zoning aspects of what has been there and what they're looking for. So it'd be great if we slipped back to the planning board, clarification, so we did have the hearing this month, but at least know what we're talking about.
Okay. Is there any issue with that, to have the planning board take a second look and have any additional comments for us at the October meeting?
I would agree with that.
Okay. Excellent. Any further discussion on this motion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 5.3, consider approving a budget amendment. Budget Amendment 1 for 2023 Purchase Order Rollovers. Staff recommends approving the rollover of purchase orders for purchases to be made in 2024, and you do have support information in the PDF labeled P O Rollover 2023 V A 1. And so staff recommends approving this rolling forward of the purchase orders. What is the pleasure of the board? Motion by Commissioners Gilreth and Toby. Any discussion there, too? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye. Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Consider approving a budget amendment for two prior-year refunds to FEMA. Fire Department, and you have support information in the item labeled Fire Department FEMA Reimbursement V A 2 dot X. The budget amendment to approve general fund battles appropriation to refund FEMA for project number 133 expense voucher for voucher number 4412 for overpayment. Staff recommends approving the appropriation of funds to refund FEMA. You have additional, yeah, an additional doc, support document, legal, no, that's the purchase over rollover. It's just the FEMA refund for V A 2000, 20001. And forgive me for my hesitancy, I'm looking, everything has changed since we've gone to an electronic document, so it's a little bit different than what I'm used to looking at. So I apologize for my stuttering. So you have the support information in the FEMA refund attachment, PDF attachment, and staff recommends approving the appropriation of funds for two refund FEMA. And let me double check the amount. And that amount is $1,592.49. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item 5.5, consider using ARPA funds for the Grahamble Street Park project. The board allocated $250,000 of ARPA funds for the Kiggs Parking Lot project. Project estimate has come in under budget, and staff would like to use the savings from the Grahamble Street Park project. Grahamble Street Park project plan approved by the Parks and Recreation Committee is attached. The preliminary cost estimate for the parking lot is $145,000, and the cost for the Grahamble Street Park project is $105,000. Staff recommends allocating the cost savings from the Kiggs Parking Lot project to the Grahamble Street Park project, and you have an attachment labeled G S Park Plan 1 dot PNG. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner Conne competently. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Well done, community members. Happy heart. Thank you very much.
I thank Tina as well. I mean, she's managed to manage the budget so that we could have that money.
Absolutely.
Thank you guys.
Absolutely. All y'all, give Tina a round of applause, please. Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, we move forward to item 5.6, consider accepting the steering committee's recommendation of Arnett Mulgrew to complete the citywide branding initiative. The branding steering committee received five requests for qualifications, held interviews, and is recommending the City of Oxford work with Arnett Mulgrew for the citywide branding initiative. The steering committee for the citywide branding initiative has reviewed the submitted qualification for the request for proposals and is recommending the firm Arnett Mulgrew versus citywide branding. The total cost of projects is approximately $25,000. The City of Oxford currently has $20,000 in Tourism Development Authority capital development funds, and the remainder will come from the Downtown Development Department and the Downtown Oxford Economic Development Corporation. Staff recommends accepting the proposal submitted by Arnett Mulgrew. You have two attachments. One is AMA Final dot PDF, and the other one is AMA dash approach and fee proposal dash and the other one is A M A dash approach or fee proposal dash seven dash six dot P D F. Those are your two attachments. And I would like to, before we get a recommendation, I'd like to ask Commissioner Lumpkins to say a word or two because he was on the steering committee that worked on this.
Yes, I was on the steering committee, as well as Mayor Pro Tem, Hills. And we had a great committee, us two, a couple of department heads, and business owners and leaders in the community worked really hard on this. And Alyssa, thank you so much for all your, your hard work on this as well. She kind of corralled us and made sure where we needed to be and review what we needed to review. So, you know, so we interviewed at least three after receiving five requests from different companies. And we thought, we all agreed that Arnett Muldro was the best company to do the job. They, they just have a load of experience, hundreds and hundreds of different communities and stuff like that that they have, they have worked with to do branding. And, you know, this is, this is a much-needed endeavor. And if you think about it, you know, the city of Oxford needs a brand, needs a logo that everybody can get behind. And I'm, I'm happy to, that we're doing this because with Arnett Muldro, we'll have the opportunity for community input as well, much like we had with our. Compris plan. Much, much like that, there'll be opportunities for members of the community to come in and voice their opinion on what Oxford means to them, what they want to see in the future. And the company's job is to kind of formulate, you know, our community into a brand. So I'm really excited about this. It'll be something that everybody hopefully can get behind, and it'll represent Oxford. People will be proud to have it on their shirt or see it on the side. You know, people from all around can see that logo and know exactly what Oxford is about.
Awesome, thank you. And I did not realize Mayor Pro Tem was on the committee as well. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Did, uh, to what Commissioner Hens just said. I did miss some because of an accident, but it was exciting, educational and beneficial.
Wonderful. And?
If anybody wants to see some of their work, there's a lot of examples on their website of towns and other businesses that they've worked with in the past. They have a lot of experience working with towns like this.
So do you, you said it in the form of a motion that you.
Sure.
Okay, so the motion by Commissioner Lumpkins. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously, and I couldn't agree with you more. I remember when we did the, when Liz Peron came from the North Carolina Main Street program to do strategic planning with us. The hub had, I think, just opened. It was in twenty seventeen, and we were in the basement there. And it was on that strategic plan that we needed to do citywide branding. So it's a long time coming, and very excited. And this firm looks outstanding. It was just great, so thank you. Yes, Arnett Muldro, if you want to look at their work and their website. Thank you very much. Moving forward to item five point seven. Consider approving a budget amendment for twenty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents in order to close out C dash fifty-five sixty-nine cement sidewalk project. Staff recommend approving a budget amendment to close out the sidewalk project. Your support information is labeled Budget Amendment Three dot doc X. And this is the sidewalk project that created sidewalk from Raleigh Street on Industry Drive down to Mark Luther King Avenue. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item five point eight. Division of Water Infrastructure, stormwater funding request. Consider adopting a resolution requesting a grant or loan for a stormwater infrastructure improvement project. The Division of Water Infrastructure expects to receive American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds and anticipates they can award grants through local assistance for Stormwater Infrastructure Investments Program. Since the funding has not been awarded to the Division of Water Infrastructure by the state yet, we don't have final confirmation that it will be a hundred percent grant. The city will have a chance to review the terms of funding, grant, and/or loan, and can then determine if we want to proceed with the project. With the Golden Leaf-funded Stormwater Master Plan project, the city, with the help of Withers Ravenel, has identified areas throughout town that are experiencing flooding or are likely to experience flooding due to inadequate stormwater infrastructure. The proposed project will focus on improving stormwater infrastructure along Meadow Heights, East Quail Ridge Road, and Sunset Avenue. And you have support information. There's a resolution. There is also an attachment labeled Meadow Heights Project. And there is another attachment, and these are maps labeled Quail Ridge and Sunset Project. And these maps are quite graphic and make it clear how important it is that we look for this money because, you know, the risk of flooding is substantial, and we've certainly had comments from these areas and towns in request for help. So staff recommends adopting the resolution requesting a Division of Water Infrastructure grant or loan. What is the pleasure of the board?
Question. Question.
Yes, sir.
I probably, I mean, are these the only areas that have been recommended? Or are there other areas? Because I, I got some, someone told me yesterday about Cottage Street was running as well. Doing stormwater.
You are correct. There are a number of areas that do need improvement. This was an area that had the best opportunity for receiving grant funding. One of the reasons is Meadow Heights and the park being in there. There's only one entrance in and out, and if that were to flood, that makes it impossible for, or very challenging for any first responder to get in and out, much less the residents, so.
Thank you, Kenzo.
Excellent, questions are good, love questions. And the motion was by Commissioner Bullock. Are there any further questions or discussion on the motion? Yes, Commissioner Bridges.
Yeah, I was approached by a business owner on Main Street who indicated that they were having, we had a big rain, probably about as big as the one we had at dispatch weekend. And they said that their business is, the basement was flooded. And I just didn't know if we had looked into any issues around Main Street there right across from the exercise place and the current issue.
We, we have had conversations about the stormwater on Main Street and have looked into, you know, what the concerns are. That's not going to be discussed at this point.
Okay, all right. I'm sure she's talked to you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, okay. Y'all know where I'm at.
Commissioner Com, you. Oh, I'm going to need to cut you off, Commissioner Bridges, I'm sorry.
No, I was, it's, but it's, I mean, she's talked to me a lot about this.
So not that this is germane to this specific agenda item, but in the same vein of stormwater, since we have a number, significant number of what we'll call, I guess, natural creeks that crisscross various communities, and those creeks being full of overgrowth and so forth. I think last year about this time, I remember, and I'm sure Public Works Director can back me up on this, I send them emails every now and then where we have a storm drain crossing through the street. I think of like Bullock Street over by Orange Street, for example. A couple of other areas in the city where we get backup. Now, I know we can't necessarily, due to certain state regulations, go in and clean those up, that those, because we're moving trees and so on and so forth. But we think about the concerns that we heard from the folks who live in and around Thorndale Country Club or the old Country Club, the folks who live in and around Granville Street and Orange Street, where the flooding tends to occur because there's so much growth in those old creek beds. Can, is it possible at the city's earliest convenience that we get some kind of understanding of what we can and cannot do in terms of maintaining those so that we do not, one, damage infrastructure like streets, and two, just kind of to help mitigate some of the flooding issues that have been taking place? Thank you, that's all.
Is, is part of the issue that many of these areas are, they're not public rights-upway, they're on private property. And so if the need to be kept clear is up to the homeowners that own that property to do that, is that part of the position?
I would, I would, I don't know if our public director, Public Works Director, would have any comments on that, but I could probably speak to it better than any of us could. But it seems to be that that's part of the issue, for sure. Not to put you on the spot.
Right. Yeah, some of it's overgrown. Some people actually dump their brush and their leaves and stuff in the ditch, which just causes trouble downstream, so, and we need to do some education on that.
Okay.
Question.
Yes, sir.
I, I know there's a volunteer, I think, Oxcan or someone, have been doing some work around Granville Street and trying to get that. I was, I was. They're in the same situation as the city, I believe. They, they don't want to step on the state's toes. But they, we have got a group that's doing some of the work.
But in terms of. Yeah, educating the public or enforcing ordinance or doing something to help prevent, because as we have heavier and heavier downpours, there's only so much water that our local creeks and streams can absorb, runoff that they can absorb. So, and it, again, last October, when that issue was brought to my attention on Bullock Street, it was clear that there was erosion and damage that was about to cost a serious amount of money as, as it would start to erode, not only the storm pipes around the clog, but it started to damage the street. So there's a financial incentive, from my perspective, to the city to figure out ways to address it without encroaching on this private property or whatever it might be. But it'd be great if we could start figuring out some, some things along with some of the other stormwater work that we're doing to help mitigate some of these issues.
Excellent.
I have one question. What happens, though, when you have water that's coming probably off of the public streets, and it runs in these little, some of them may be natural springs, and some of them are man-made, and then they empty into a neighborhood? Because that's what I see in Lexington Park. And, and, and how do we, how do we address that? And who, who bears the brunt of that when the water really is forced through there? And then it inundates those communities too. So, and it does, and it does just compound things. And you can see that the creeks are getting bigger and the little trickles are getting wider and wider in, in, on private property. I mean, I understand the private park, but the runoff is actually creating a bigger issue for the program.
Probably good for us to look at that specific situation with this request.
Excellent, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Okay. All in favor of, the, excuse me? Yes, okay, I can throw that. Of the motion to adopt this requesting the funds for the stormwater funding request, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item five point nine. Adopt revised twenty twenty-three Stormwater Capital Improvement Plan, or C I P. The Division of Water Infrastructure recommends that a capital improvement plan be updated yearly, but at a minimum every two years, or to be eligible for points in the grant slash loan application process. We are applying for American Rescue Plan Act grant, and Stormwater C I P needs to be adopted. This document helps the city plan for future projects. However, it does not commit the city to the project. Only an application for funds with a decision to use city funds commits the city to a project. Staff recommends that the board adopt the twenty twenty-three Stormwater Capital Improvement Plan. And you have an attachment, a Stormwater C I P twenty twenty-three dot P D F, which is that plan. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Toby? Any discussion? All in favor of Commissioner Toby's motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item six, the consent agenda. To accept the July financial report and approve the July thirty-first agenda minutes and the August eighth regular minutes. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And at this time, our agenda is to go into closed session. And I'm going to read the purpose, but then before we do that, I'm going to invite comments from the board members while the public is still here before we go into close. So the six point one, closed session for affiliate general staff is one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A six. To consider the qualifications, competence, performance, condition of appointment of a public officer or employee, the respective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate, complain, charge, or grievance by or against a public officer or employees. So that is the purpose of our session. In the meantime, comments? Any comments from the chairman?
I would say, great to experience the worst hot sauce. I was really impressed with the amount of people that were there. The forecast was terrible and the teeming rain. I think that's a tribute to the work of the staff, volunteers, not only today, but also for, it was quite impressive. Definitely had something special.
Great, yes, I think we all agree. Absolutely. Commissioner Lumpkins.
Welcome.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Welcome.
Oh, excuse me, now show you that I apologize completely.
I was wondering if I was being recommended.
No, 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 I was just writing my notes.
I would also join in congratulations because it was a great planning effort. Then when you throw in a storm, which adds a few macro problems, the way the group, the volunteers came around and advised everybody in various stands and sensed that the weather was coming, what was happening, what was going on. I just hope to let that on everyone, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. And I apologize for looking down instead of looking up. Mayor Pro Tem, thank you for keeping me on target.
Excellent, okay. I agree with my predecessors. And I also would like to again thank those that I did it at our meeting last week. But again, I want to thank all the employees and staff for your calls, your visits, your fruits and vegetables, beautiful floral arrangements given to me during my accident. I'm not one hundred, but I'm ninety-seven point five.
That's pretty interesting.
Again, thank you all, thank you so much.
I learned so many others.
Absolutely.
That's all about.
And, because I don't want to forget, I'm going to echo, absolutely outstanding. You know, we've gone sixteen years without a weather issue really impacting hot sauce. So we were probably due, but I was staggered to see how many people came out. And also to see that a lot of vendors and so on, even though obviously they didn't do the level of business that they normally do, felt pretty good about the event. And so I agree with the comments, and thank you very much, everybody who worked so hard. And really, this is, this is more than a village. This is a massive mobilization for everybody, so thank you so much. And I would like to give a shout out that I had failed to do earlier to our street department workers that. department workers, that some time ago, somebody in the community complained about not the uneven edges of the sidewalks, but that there are sidewalks in the neighborhood that, um, have been completely degraded, and they were pushing a wheelchair and almost tossed the person in the chair out, and the wheels stuck on the uneven pavement, and Public Works and the street department came through and just went around the block and around the neighborhood, because other people were commenting on Facebook. Did an amazing job, uh, redoing sidewalk squares, uh, neat and clean and careful, and I just want to say thank you, because it was really, it made me so proud. Thank you very much. Here, I'm Commissioner Bridges.
Uh, I don't have anything.
Commissioner Toby?
Um, just to repeat whatever we said about hot sauce contest, a great day despite the rain. Something I just wanted, if, if you ever get the chance, go down College Street to Where Our Square, and see the mural that's been painted on the side of the building. It is beautiful, and it's just another part of beautifying Oxford. But take a look at Where Our Square, College Street, it really is something to look at.
Well, I'm glad to hear you say that. That mural is being sponsored by Jenny Coines, who, after seeing the mural that we put up on the, the back of the, um, current building, wanted wildflowers in Oxford, and so, uh, we worked with her and the building owners and looked at a couple of it, took us a while to locate, uh, to find the wall, but we could get permission to paint on it, but, but that is through the large S of Jenny Coines personally, who wanted to bring wildflowers into downtown Oxford, and with any luck, once it's done, and approved, some magic support from, uh, the DOE DC, but side grain of fun. Thank you for bringing that up.
One question, did that go through like the process that we gave of our mural? Everything went smoothly?
It did, it did. Biggest thing was, uh, permission, you got another law, but it's the same guy that painted the other one, he does a great job, so, thank you. Commissioner Gilry?
Well, in spite of all the rain that happened with the hot sauce festival, it, it really was quite enjoyable, and the reason being is that we had such a variety of vendors, and then, and as, as you walked around and talked to the different vendors, we had a lot of local folks, I mean, a lot of local folks, to the point that I started making a little list of who's the most local, and that's where I'm going to spend my money today. And, and it became hard, because there were so many of them, and even the local people who have canned their, their goods and their wares, you know, I got really excited when I found out we had all these local gardeners, and I didn't know that their garden existed. Anyway, so I, I am really, really impressed with the conversations that the rain made us have. Um, so there were a lot of people from outside of our community that stood upon some of the shelters and stuff, and just started to jabbering about whoever, with whomever was standing there, so that, that was a very, very good welcoming type, um, environment, so, good job.
Thank you, Commissioner. Hi.
Commissioner Com. So, uh, not to beat a dead horse, but again, hot sauce festival, despite the rain, I think was a success, you know, a lot of, it was a, it was a big crowd for a rainy day. Do you want to, I just bring one thing that was, or address one thing that was brought to my attention, uh, in the downtown area, so the, uh, Mayor Kern Park, the alleyway that spans from Main Street over to the Court Street Parking Lot, um, I can't confirm this, but I had, I had somebody approach me the day, talk about how slick it gets in there, especially with all the rain we've had, um, probably because it's not a lot of light, it's kind of a, it's a shaded alleyway, um, but I promised that I would address it with the city staff, so this is me addressing the city staff, if we can take a look, I don't know what the revenue would be, but I'll leave that in capable hands of, uh, of our Public Works Department and city manager.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And so, with that, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion. Can we, can we have a, a brief recess for a hundred?
We can. Absolutely have a recess to allow people to vacate the premises, go use your, the facilities, and, and, yes, five minutes and then come back for a quick closed session. Thank you all, you came out to the third floor of City Hall, we appreciate you being here, appreciate you being in our community.